Tuesday, June 7th, this meeting of the Ontario Central School District Board of Education is called to order. May I have a first to enter executive session to discuss the tenure of a specific employee and the employment of a particular person? First, trustee Bishop, second trustee Sherry.
Roll call? Doesn't that go first?
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Alright, that's unanimous. We will be back at 7:00 PM. May I have a first to exit executive session? Trustee Story, trustee Sherry second, all those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. We have a tobacco policy in place. There's no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge. Amanda, could you take roll call, please?
Trustee Salem.
Present.
Trustee Sherry. Trustee Story. Here. Trustee DeJesus. Trustee Bishop.
Present.
No comment. Bennett Principal Gabe Bono will welcome the board. Hello, Principal Bono.
Hello, trustee Salem. I believe this is your last board meeting in, no, in Bennett Elementary. So, I just wanted to say thank you for your years of service, even as a PTA president. It was a pleasure working with you and partnering with you at that level. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Salem.
You're welcome. The pleasure's all mine. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Bennett. As you know, this is a very energetic building and I'm a very proud principal, almost to a fault. I want to start off by recognizing Deb DePrill, who is our district clerk, I believe that's her official title.
She's our treasurer.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Talking off the top of my head. Added to the list of mistakes that I make. Anyway. Deb, because of Deb, she was able to take a donation that we just recently received and created a little extra legwork on her part to get it on the agenda for this evening so that those funds could help our teachers get more books in teacher and students' hands over the summertime. For the Bennett Book Boogie, the teachers just placed the order, well actually they have it in the shopping cart. They're gonna push purchase after this board meeting, so thank you very much in advance for supporting that. And special thanks to Ms. DePrill. I would like to acknowledge the 4th grade and their Colonial Fair, Colonial Trade Fair celebrations they had this past week. On top of balancing assessments for children, including NWA and the science assessments and field trips. This is a very, very busy time for the 4th grade and want to acknowledge them for their efforts. Also, we're gonna be having an outdoor graduation ceremony on June 22nd over by the field and the student government and the 6th grade teachers have been working very hard on planning for that event. We don't have a rain date because there's so many other graduation ceremonies happening at that time. So, Mother Nature will cooperate. Just letting you know that Mother Nature's gonna cooperate with us. Without any further ado, because we do have a long presentation, I'm going to share with you a lot of the excitement of what Bennett has to offer and let the students do the talking from here on out in my welcome. Are your kids ready?
Yes.
Okay. So, whoever's gonna do the talking has to come to the podium. There she is.
I'm sorry. Hello, I'm Joan Mayone Allison. This is Deb Hateman. We're the co-advisors of Student Council. I'm so happy that we have this opportunity. We met with you Zoom several months ago, but it's so nice to be here in person, so I can publicly thank Mr. Bono and Principal Sella and Deb and the kids because they've just been wonderful. And I don't want to give anything away, I'm going to let them do the talking, so, my Student Council.
Hi, I'm Arastus. As a group, we faced lots of setbacks and challenges. We are proud of how we persevered and created a Student Council community that is committed to being positive role models for our peers.
Hi, I'm Rowan. I was humbled to be voted in as an executive to the Bennett Student Council. I've enjoyed representing my peers and helping to promote a positive environment that includes fun and helped make Bennett a better place. And I'm honored to make the school environment a fun and more enjoyable experience.
Hi, I'm Emily Amro. A lot of people want to be a part of Student Council. Some of us didn't get voted into office, but that did not diminish our enthusiasm. We continue to volunteer and are actively participating in all that Student Council does.
Hey, I'm Emily and Student Council worked with the Bennett PBIS team to plan events that were both fun and promoted school spirit.
Hi, my name is Henry and as we Student Council members, we were honored that Senator Michelle Hincky asked us to help in this fun activity that meant so much to local seniors.
Hi, my name's Martin Berman, sorry. And in loving memory of Pearson
Hi, my name's Martin Berman, sorry, and in loving memory of Pearson Reynolds, a distinguished representative on the Student Council team, we've, sorry. We created a fundraiser which sold baseball caps and beanies with encouraging messages.
I'm Jesna, and in years past, non-events have yielded really good results. So this year, our "Don't Get Your Hands Dirty" non-event kicked off our courtyard project. We invited the Bennett families to donate toward our cause because every donation, whatever the amount, went a long way toward helping us realize our goal this school year.
Hi, I'm Calke. Gary Van Leuven was a beloved Bennett custodian who died in 2007. At that time, the courtyard was dedicated to him, with hopes of seeing it become a more usable place.
Hi, I'm Scarlett. Ms. Maillon Allison had a vision that never seemed to happen. With the passing of Pearson, the desire to honor him renewed interest in the courtyard. She mentioned her idea to Ms. Slater. A week later, snowboards appeared.
Hi, I'm Lily Goodman. Ms. Maillon then mentioned her idea to Mrs. Lamonda. Days later, she showed up with a blueprint and plan. As you can see on our presentation and on the bulletin board, it's happening, and we're excited to see it happen.
Hi, I'm Sophia, and I just wanted to let you know to please stop by and see our dedication bench and our bulletin board display. There are so many people to thank, including Principals Bono and Sella, Ms. Slater, Ms. Lamonda, Mr. and Mrs. Jared, Artist in Residence Donna Perezzi, retired reading teacher Veronica Cahill, the folks at Bel Air Mountain and Potter Brothers. They donated the snowboards for the bench. Carl Allison, who created the snowboard benches, community members who donated time and money, teachers and staff members. The list is endless.
That is our presentation. We're really hoping that you have an opportunity, if not because it's raining, to walk out in the courtyard tonight. We do have a bulletin board display out in the hallway opposite the gymnasium doors. So the benches out there that has a back, there's two benches in the courtyard that do not have backs. There's more to come. That's phase one, and we're not nearly done with it. So phase two is to follow. We want to continue with the pea gravel along the courtyard all the way to the west end, or east end rather, and add more chairs, more benches. We want it to be an environment that truly promotes an educational outdoor experience for students. So thank you for giving my kids the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Principal Bono, and thank you, young student leaders. You guys are very powerful, and we appreciate your hard work.
That concludes my welcome. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you for your hard work. Thank you, students.
Students, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You were amazing.
I just wanted to take one second to thank Mr. Ms. Maillon's husband, who built the bench for us. I think he did a beautiful job, and I think it's a wonderful recognition of Pearson. Please thank him for us.
Fantastic. The Board of Education hereby approves the minutes of May 16th, 2022, May 17th, 2022, May 19th, and May 27th. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Story. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. And now Karen Hadley will discuss her role as teacher on special assignment, working to support the integration of social studies, literacy, and other district initiatives. Hello, Ms. Hadley.
Hello, that's better. All right. I want to, first of all, thank the board very much for giving me the opportunity to share with you some of the exciting happenings from this past year with my work as a teacher on special assignment. I also want to welcome back Victoria McLaren, who is responsible for creating this position for me two years ago, before COVID, a little bit delayed, but here we are, flying with it. So I am so privileged to have this very incredible opportunity to work as a TOSA in the elementary social studies program. I'm an instructional coach, and I'm working with the district to support our elementary social studies implementation in Phoenisha and Woodstock this year, extending hopefully, as plans go, into Bennett next year. This position is non-threatening and supportive. It's non-evaluative. My goal is to help teachers become the best version of themselves for their own well-being and in the service of our students. So social studies is the one elementary discipline that does not get tested. ELA is tested, math is tested, science is tested. And so teachers feel an incredible obligation to teach to those subjects first and foremost. Social studies is often perceived as sort of the peas on the academic dinner plate. It's the first thing that gets cut when there's a snow day, or when there is a book fair, or when there is, you name it, any number of interruptions that happen in the course of a school year. So we realized that the way to make this happen was through academic integration, that teachers didn't want yet another hoop to have to jump through. Me, being the social studies coach, we had to find a way to tie it in with other academic goals. And I'll talk more about that. This is the New York State Resource Toolkit. It shows six inquiries per grade level. It actually goes all the way up through 12th grade. The inquiries are based on scaffolded questioning, supported by primary source documents, and lead the children to some sort of a debate or argument based on a compelling question. And ultimately, the goal is to have them internalize, to feel the conflict of the argument, and to want to do something about it, to take some sort of social action and apply what they've learned through these inquiries in a meaningful way to their community and in their own lives. So what we're trying to do is integrate. So in addition to social studies and as part of the inquiries, we are also looking to hit some of the New York State's new civic readiness initiative goals. Civic knowledge, civic skills and actions, civic mindsets, civic experiences. It's actually perfect timing because this is being piloted across New York State in high schools just this year. So this is a new New York State education goal, to have kids get involved in participating in our democracy. So one of the ways that we did that this year was through an inquiry that we launched in 2nd grade on US symbols. We explored the flag. We explored, you know, we looked at the White House and at the Twin Towers and various different symbols of the United States. And students decided that they really wanted to focus on the American bald eagle, not only because it is on the school sign at Phoenisha, but also because it is now our school mascot. And there is a statue that you may or may not know was taken off of Grand Central Station in the early 1900s. The original building had 12 of these enormous cement sculptures, statues, that were up at the top. There was a fire. They had to take them down. And so one of them is now mounted at the intersection of Route 28 and Main Street, Phoenisha. It's that eagle right there. So the kids see it every single day, and they really felt compelled to do something with the eagle. And what we arrived at was our sad school sign. Sad only because it was chipping and faded and, you know, the paint was worn. And the kids thought that the sign didn't reflect the pride of the bald eagle or the pride that they had in their school, so they wanted to restore it. So together with the art teacher, the kids used toothbrushes and cleaned the lichen off of the sign that was growing in the letters, and then they carefully repainted it and really took ownership, not only of restoring the sign, but also of participating in sharing with the community the pride that they felt in belonging to this wonderful school and to the United States by extension, by working as participants in our civic democracy. They presented the sign on a beautiful spring day, public speaking. I am so privileged to follow these 6th graders, who were my 5th graders last year. They've learned that to speak in front of people is, it's one of our English language arts skills. And here we are, giving children in 2nd and 3rd grade an opportunity to share their feelings, their thoughts, in public, in front of all of their peers, using a microphone. Civic action. And there is the restored sign. They did also want to write some of the American values around the outside of the sign. This was an addition that aligned with the inquiry that we had been using, but also with their honest feelings about how this civic project made them feel. Hope, determination, community, courage, freedom, and respect. Another civic action project that we launched this year across both elementary schools in the district was a plastic film recycling challenge that was hosted by the Trex Company. They produce composite decking and composite outdoor furniture. And schools all across the country competed to collect and recycle plastic film. Each week, the kids brought in their stash from home, and we also recycled everything that was plastic film here in the school district and added up the totals. They weighed them. They did the math. We took them to Hannaford in West Hurley, which was our participating drop-off center. Community businesses, the Emerson Five Below, the Woodstock Public Library, as well as Houss, which isn't pictured here, but Houss Hardware was huge in helping to gather plastic film for us, all dropped off at our school on a weekly basis over the course of six months. And by Earth Day, it started on Recycling Day, which is November 15th, and ended on Earth Day, six months later, we collected two tons of plastic film, kind of an amazing staggering number. And for all of those efforts, the kids won two benches, one for Phoenisha and one for Woodstock. You can see the film that I made, sort of journeying this process. It's on both the Phoenisha website and the Woodstock website under School News. I invite you to check it out. So part of my job is to unpack the inquiries with the teachers, starting in 2nd grade and in 3rd grade. There are three inquiries that we focused on in each grade level, three of the six. We looked at the calendars together, the teachers and I, and we decided which inquiries were gonna work best in which months. We did that also in 3rd grade. We realized that, you know, in order to be successful, we had to go kind of slow and steady. We didn't want to bite off more than we could chew. So we tackled half of the New York State inquiries for this year and completed them. And part of the process was professional development for those teachers, many of whom had never seen an inquiry before. Inquiry is a new approach to instruction for many of them. So we looked at the anatomy of an inquiry. We talked about primary source research. And I think most importantly, we shared resources and ideas across the two ends of the district, Phoenisha and Woodstock, that often don't have an opportunity to talk to each other, to compare how they approach teaching, different topics, different lessons. And we were able to become more aligned and more in step with each other and share what we have and what we're passionate about. One of the other things that evolved in our professional development was an interest that the teachers had in looking at heroes and holidays across the 10 months of the academic calendar. It's sort of the low-hanging fruit, that when a holiday comes up, the kids are geared up to celebrate it, and teachers want to teach into that. So the question was, how can we teach heroes and holidays more deliberately? And maybe using the inquiry method, using more primary sources, using richer, supporting literature. Which holidays do we want to teach more deliberately? What texts and materials do we currently use? What viewpoints are left out? How can we present these heroes and holidays from multiple points of view? And what additional texts and primary sources do we need to procure? So we looked back at the curriculum calendar, and we plugged in those 10 months of heroes and holidays. And we chose a few in 2nd grade that we wanted to develop. We focused on 9/11, hit the year running, September 11th. We looked at decolonizing Thanksgiving, looking at Thanksgiving from the Wampanoag Native American perspective. We did a Martin Luther King inquiry. We did a June, we're going to do a Juneteenth inquiry. That's coming up next week. And then in 3rd grade, we did similar inquiries, developed and differentiated for the older grade group. But we also focused on equity, equality, discrimination, and racism, which are vocabulary terms that appear in the 3rd grade standards. The concepts and the vocabulary were relatively new to 3rd graders, and we wanted to become comfortable with using the vocabulary and understanding the concepts in practice. So one of the things that we did was tie our new inquiries in with SEL, with social emotional learning, and our partnership with Morningside. Marika, who is amazing, is our professional developer for the elementary schools from Morningside. And I worked very closely with her on that inquiry in particular to make sure that we were including a more equitable and more brave conversations on race in our inquiry development that teachers felt that they could handle. That's another big piece of it, is teacher comfort, and teachers are in different places with talking about race. They have different backgrounds and different personal experiences. So it got tricky at times, and it wasn't always a comfortable inquiry to unpack. So Marika really helped us with that. We also have been working with Dr. Jevon Hunter, who is from SUNY Buffalo. He led us through 10 sessions of professional development. Stephanie and other members of the Ontario Committee were on that PD learning opportunity along with teachers from Sagardis and, I think Highland it was, and a couple of Bosse's. And over the course of those 10 lessons, Dr. Hunter really unpacked the new culturally responsive sustaining education framework that is published by New York State Education. We completed a JEDI project, his words. JEDI stands for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And we focused on one of the four goals of the CRS, which is creating a more welcoming and affirming environment. And the way we did that was through literature. We looked at the literature that we have to support our social studies units, the literature that we have to support the heroes and holidays inquiries, and we realized that many of the texts that we were using were singular perspective, were dated, and were not representative of the diverse cultures of our students. So we started to build new libraries with the generous support of Stephanie's budget. We bought lots and lots of books. These books are all recommended by the Children's Book Council, and they- These books are all recommended by the Children's Book Council, and they are now, across the 10 months, they're organized, and they are available for teachers. It's a lending library for teachers at Phoenisha and Woodstock, and we plan to expand it to Bennett next year. So these books support all of the 10 themes, one or more of the 10 themes in social studies: culture, time continuity and change, people, places, and environments, individual development and identity, individuals, groups, and institutions, power, authority, and governance, production, distribution, and consumption, science, technology, and society, global connections, and of course, civic ideals and practices. These titles are age-appropriate, they are historically accurate, they feature characters that can serve as role models for our students, they represent a diversity of groups and cultures, they celebrate multicultural authors and illustrators, they're sensitive to a broad range of cultural experiences, they have a true sense of story. The kids love these books, they are highly engaging, they're very readable, and they have a strong positive visual impact with illustrations that complement the text. These books also serve as mirrors so that children can see themselves represented. Many of the books that we have had traditionally on our libraries either feature animals for young children or white kids. The new books that we have feature children from many different backgrounds, different languages, different abilities, different disabilities, different skin colors, and we're able to talk about that, and we're able to share these broad ranges of experiences from children across the world and across the American culture with the children who are represented in these stories themselves in the books. Children can also learn as windows. They can either be mirrors of themselves, they can be windows through, to another world that children can experience differently from their own world, and they can be sliding glass doors, they can be an invitation, I always think of Narnia, when I think of this expression, windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors. It's like a portal. You can enter a new world through wonderful literature. And this concept was coined by Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop. It's used widely now when referring to how literature can help to kindle empathy for children and to create vicarious experiences for them. So I've created book lists by the month, which are embedded in a Google Classroom for second grade teachers and for third grade teachers. This is an example of the Indigenous People Book List for the month of November. Teachers can preview the titles on this first page, and then each title on this page has its own individual page. So teachers can read the synopsis of the book before coming down to the book room to actually put their hands on it and dig into it, and to help determine what they would like to include as read-alouds or as, you know, children's book selections in their classroom for some period of time. Here's another example. This was a favorite because it had a recipe in the back. And for about a week, the faculty rooms in both schools smelled like fried bread. Delicious. Here's an example of the face page on the Google Classroom Libraries link. This would be for the month of May, when we were featuring Asian-American literature. There are also read-alouds that I've created for some of the books that teachers particularly were drawn to, reading guides that have primary sources and video links and authors discussing the process behind the creation of the books. And this has become a favorite. Teachers are really loving these read-aloud suggestions. So a lot of these titles can also fit in with or even replace some of the literature that goes along with our Teachers College Reading and Writing units. Not that the literature that TC is giving us is at all bad, it's wonderful literature, but because we're looking at integration, this is a way that we can hit some of the social studies content while we're also doing our TC reading and writing workshops. Teachers have also, with their school budgets now, asked me to put together a list of recommendations for expanding their classroom libraries, updating their classroom libraries. So I've gone back in and created book suggestions that represent diversity, equity, and inclusion for the first grade classroom library, second and third grade classroom library, and we've tried to vertically align the inquiries, the heroes and holidays, and the Teachers College Reading and Writing units, so that they can fit together across the school year. Again, looking for ways that we can integrate. It's not doing more, it's doing better. And here it is for third grade also. I've also created a This Day in History Google page. Every day, there is a, either a primary source document, or some photographs, or a video, or something that teachers can share in like a two-minute quick hit. It's a good for, good for like transition time or a little bit of downtime to just fit that history in there somewhere. So once again, the key to this is integration. We're working on the social studies framework, we're trying to get the English language arts literacy standards integrated as much as possible. A lot of it lends itself quite naturally to social emotional learning and the culturally responsive sustaining framework, and of course, the Civic Readiness Initiative with civic action, getting the kids involved in projects. So year one, this is what we have accomplished. We've adapted and modeled three out of the six toolkit inquiries for third grade and for second grade. We've created eight original inquiries based on teacher requests around the heroes and holidays for second grade and third grade. All children at Woodstock and Phoenisha have participated in some civic action project, sometimes two or three different projects. We've begun building the Social Studies Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Teacher Libraries at both of the schools. We've modeled diversity, equity, and inclusion read-alouds as inquiries using primary sources, and I have facilitated monthly professional development across the school year for teachers in grade two and three. This summer, I've proposed a book study on People's Curriculum for the Earth. I'd like to really focus on climate change and integrate science with social studies, again, the vertical integration, and collaborate, ideally K through six, to have a spiraling curriculum using the inquiry design model and primary sources and civic action and argument to teach children about the climate crisis. And if all goes well, we will continue to adapt the remaining inquiries for second and third grade next year. It's really a two-year process to roll out the toolkit inquiries at each grade level. We'll continue to do the professional development. The teachers are telling me that they're really enjoying being able to talk with each other and pick my brains and vice versa. We're going to start building the Social Studies Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Library at Bennett. We will expand greatly the DEI read-alouds, those have been a big hit. The inquiries, the toolkit inquiries are typically between three and six lessons. The read-aloud inquiries are one lesson. It's just, it's less of a commitment for teachers, so it's been working really great. And hopefully, we can win a Trex bench for Bennett, which I think might fit really nicely out in that beautiful courtyard that the sixth graders are building in memory of Pearson Reynolds. Thank you so much for your time.
Wow, Ms. Hadley, thank you for that incredible, comprehensive, and you just bring such great energy and expertise to this. And thank you, Assistant Superintendent Laffin, for empowering Ms. Hadley to do this, and to Superintendent McLaren for helping envision this. That was amazing. First of all, I never thought I'd hear the word decolonize at a board meeting, and I'm going to drop the mic and leave. I would if there were one more of us, so we could still have a quorum, but questions or comments, Superintendent McLaren?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Hadley for such a wonderful presentation, and although she gave me credit for thinking of this position, I kind of have to step back and give her credit because she came to us just with a real desire to explore her passion for social studies and to provide other resources for the district, and this is how it manifested, and she's just done an incredible job with it, so I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Trustee Bishop.
Yep. I just wanted to thank you so much, Karen, for your enthusiasm and your passion. It's just, it's contagious. I mean, you couldn't see me because I'm wearing a mask, but I was smiling the whole time. I knew you were going to be amazing in this role. Thank you so much.
Trustee Sherry.
I had the pleasure of Ms. Hadley teaching my son, and I know what a phenomenal educator that you are, and I'm just so gratified to see the work that you've done. It's really amazing and truly appreciated.
Anybody else? I just have, I want to also say, you also taught my daughter, and you used a phrase that I will never forget, you referred to the dirt of learning. And the dirt of learning, getting your hands dirty in the material. And I guess I just want to ask, as sort of our, sort of our, how we as a culture have sort of treated debate and argument and what has happened to that over the last few years, how you feel about sort of, first of all, I want to encourage, I think it's fantastic that you're encouraging that in the classroom, and I just wanted to know if you had anything to say about that in terms of sort of how you feel that fits into our sort of broader cultural shift towards these sort of binary arguments?
That's a loaded question, and I've already taken a lot of time.
It was meant to be.
Yeah. Yeah, learning is messy. I think debate comes so naturally to children, you know, from the time they learn how to talk. They want to know why they can't have chocolate before dinner, and I'm thinking of my own son, and their powers of persuasion to convince their mother why they should be able to have chocolate before dinner. And I think there was one time I actually caved because his argument was so spot-on, it was so good and so compelling, that he needed to know that his voice was so powerful and his thinking was so powerful. He was two, I think. I think, you know, as children go through public education as it exists now, for all of the wonderful things that it is, it doesn't honor children's agency enough, it doesn't provide opportunities for very young children to participate as citizens at their young age. We sort of think about children as citizens in training, you know? Well, one day you'll be able to vote, one day you'll be able to, you know, present your point of view to people who are going to listen to you. That's the way it's cast oftentimes. But I think that children as young as, you know, preschool, kindergarten, can decide for themselves what they want to do to affect their environment, to create a better community for themselves. And the more we offer those opportunities to kids to make decisions for themselves, guided decisions, about how they want to change their world and how they want to participate in those changes, I think the more open we're going to become as a society to being able to hear each other. If children learn at a young age to consider different points of view and to hear respectfully other points of view without being, you know, nasty or bipartisan, if you want to get into the politics of it, then, you know, we're creating a more, a more responsible democracy. You know, Ben, Frank, who was it, Franklin? Yeah. Benjamin Franklin said, when somebody asked him, what kind of a government is it you're creating, sir? He said, "Well, it's a republic if you can keep it," which means that we have to be able to debate. We have to be able to disagree. And if we can continue to do that without destroying each other, then the country will be a better place, and we have to teach our children how to do that at a very young age.
Wow, that is a very powerful and fearless answer. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. Continued success. Okay, let me make sure I'm at the right place. Yes, I would like to open the hearing for, on the 2022-23 District Safety Plan. The public are invited to speak, as are board members. Anybody? Superintendent McLaren?
While I did not have the pleasure of participating in the revision of this plan, I know that Assistant Superintendent Laffin did. There were not a lot of changes to the plan. There were a couple different programs and initiatives that were added that have been undertaken this year, including a program on responsible social media and the anonymous reporting system that was put in place. There was also a section added on page nine talking about the district's filtering application that is on student-owned, or student, school-owned, student-use devices that searches for some high-risk topics that can then identify areas where students could maybe need some help. And then I know that we still need to update the use of surveillance cameras board policy now that we have cameras that have been expanded throughout the district. And if there are any other specific questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them, or if there's anything else that Assistant Superintendent Laffin would like to add.
The only other thing comes from the Public Health Emergency Plan at the end. Just a note that the border regents is going to be updating their requirements for the discussion of how we use our provisions for remote instruction. So that's supposed to come at the July 20th meeting for the border regents. So there's proposed language there that will require us to be more specific in this plan about the use of a remote instruction. So the idea is, once that occurs and is voted on, that we'll need to revisit that to meet that requirement. But otherwise, well done.
Anybody else? Yes, Trustee Sherry.
Not a, well, a question. I believe that we're going to have Officer Sharon come and be open for questions, is that correct?
So Officer Sharon was unable to come tonight, but I have invited Sheriff Figaro to come with Officer Sharon and talk about the SRO program, and I was having some fairly consistent communication with the sheriff, but I think he got a little busy. But Deputy Sharon has committed that he will try and reiterate the next meeting in June to see if the sheriff can make it.
Great. Yes, and say your name into the mic.
Sure, Lindsey Shan. So I just have some, I guess, technical questions. I noticed on the team that there were not any parents listed, but in the, in the identification of the school team, parent organizations are included but not limited to, so I just wanted to know what steps were taken to get any parent organization involved and what will happen in the future to get PTAs or PTOs involved in that?
So you can speak to the original construction of the plan, and then perhaps Assistant Superintendent Laffin, if you want to, and Trustee, sorry, go ahead.
There is a parent currently on there, I am.
I am. I'm the board representative and also the parents thing. The, this plan is set by SED, is, SED tells us who's got to be on these plans and what people can be. So we have to listen to what SED tells us.
I understand that. It says specifically, representatives of the school board, students, staff members, administrators, parent organizations, school safety personnel, and other school personnel. So I'm specifically referring to parent organizations.
Yeah, so specifically, was there any specific outreach to the PTAs at the three elementary schools?
Specifically regarding this, I'm not sure if our previous interim superintendent, Mary Stephanie, I know she was in deep conversation with them regularly about this. But as far as the specifics of the plan, I'm not sure really what that conversation was. There weren't participatory members when we met regarding the specific plan.
PTA members when you met regarding the plan?
Right, there weren't particular to these meetings.
Okay. Does that answer that part of the question?
Yes. Another question I had was regarding making this plan available to the public 30 days prior to its original adoption. I just want to know what steps were taken to post the plan and how was the public told? I'm pretty, I'm pretty active on looking at what's going on in Antioa, and I just, I don't recall seeing this. I'm not saying it didn't get posted to the public, but I don't recall seeing this other than when I looked at the agenda.
Do you know when it went on Board Docs?
I can give you the exact date, but I believe it went on on Thursday prior to the board meeting.
It was on the website before that?
Correct. Yep, it was posted up on the website as well.
So we just have to, is it possible to just make a shout point next year, 30 days in advance, just to let people know? I don't really think people, like, people don't look at the agenda. So without knowing this is going on, that's probably why there's not a lot of people here.
I would say that is possible. And then when we discuss our communications survey, you'll see that we're going to try to figure out how people get information.
That's, I mean, why I'm asking this is specifically because of communications.
I got a question. Wait a second.
Yeah, we're only, this is a hearing. We're not, we're not.
We're starting the 30-day period today, right now.
Oh, today it's, gotcha.
This is the hearing.
We don't, so. We can send it. I misunderstood that, so now I understand.
We can still send it out, though. I appreciate that suggestion.
Sorry, I have a lot of notes. Oh, in under Training and Drills and Exercises, one of the sentences there is, the efficiency of these drills is assessed annually to, by building administrators, SRO, and staff. I just wanted to know if there's a way for the community to know how we're doing?
Well, how that's communicated to the community, I don't know.
I mean, are we efficient in our drills? Our fire drills, our lockdown drills?
So I don't know the best vehicle to communicate the outcomes of the drills. After each drill, there's a debrief at each building. And Deputy Sharon is consistently involved in the drills and the debrief and making suggestions. And when he can, he invites other local law enforcement representatives to participate as well. We can talk about how to share the efficiency, but we do have to be very mindful of not sharing the details, as you know, from your board service.
Totally get that.
So I'm not, I'm not sure where, I'm not sure how much we can communicate without leaving people feeling like they want more information that they then can't have.
I mean, I, as a, as somebody who's been on this board and a member of the community, I totally understand what you're saying. I would be completely happy with, we're doing great. Or we passed. Or we're totally efficient. Sorry, I have to find, oh, under Early Detection of Potential Violent Behaviors. I'm just curious, there's not a lot there. It just mostly talks about people being notified. But I just wanted to know what, if there's a plan in place for after that. A lot of what we hear in the news when there's active shooters is, these individuals had a past of, you know, violent behaviors or emotional disturbances. But nothing has ever talked about what steps were taken or not taken and how it can be improved. So is there a plan in place after a student or individual is deemed by staff members to require attention? Is there a plan after the fact?
I think I can speak a little bit to that, or I can at least introduce, you know, this is sort of at the root of our efforts, you know, with adding support, social work support and our ASTER partnerships. And I think that, you know, we haven't discussed any specific events, but you're absolutely right that a lot of times, early detection is the best way to prevent, and making sure that every student is respected is the best way to prevent some of the worst things that can happen, safety-wise. And I think, to a certain extent, that's part of what you heard in Karen Hadley's plan. You know, so I think that that is, at least that's how I would view the answer to that particular question. And we do give regular updates to that. That's usually in the superintendent's update or in presentations throughout the year about those particular efforts. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I would just add that there's multiple prongs of prevention that have to be balanced with FERPA laws and student privacy and all of the regulations that support the individual student as well. So it's a balance of prevention and protection of privacy, I would say. But I would agree completely, the work that we're doing to increase student mental health support, the SEL work, looking at our, the New York State CRS document and thinking about how we can best implement that in a deeper, multiple-pronged approach. And that work is always evolving.
Before we move on to any, your next question, I just also wanted to add along those lines, a question of my own. The anonymous reporting system, has it, have you found it broadly useful? I mean, has it been used?
It has been used. It has been, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any information brought forward in that format that wasn't already known from another format. But again, it is another opportunity for someone to share information. And the more opportunities and avenues, the better.
And I presume it takes time for a community to understand that that is a tool that's there to be used. And so perhaps more reminders or as part of our orientation? Because I don't think it was here at the beginning of this year, right? It sort of came mid-year.
And then under Situational Responses, under Hazard Categories, under Civil Disturbances, I'm just curious why Active Shooter is not on there in Under Type? After reading through the Physical Assault section, it doesn't really apply to active shooting situations. And I just feel like every school should have a response for that. And it doesn't seem like, in this plan, we have one of those.
For this, why do I think it doesn't, it's not required from SED? That's because a lot of what is these appendices are what is from SED, what we're required to do. That's.
They are, but I would almost say you could apply the Intruder Alert, which is a civil disturbance, as well as the Hostage Taking. Physical assault or threat.
My only concern with that is, the third one down says, confront intruder unauthorized visitor and ask him for identification.
Well, depending on.
I don't think an active shooter is going to respond to that.
Although I do think people do try and confront active shooters.
And I understand that these are, you know, this is what SED requires, but this is something I feel like we need to go above and beyond for. And then I was just wondering if, under Arrangements for Obtaining Emergency Assistance for Local Government, why mobile mental health is not included there?
Is mobile mental health, that's the county, the county provided and it's not referenced anywhere else?
I didn't see it. I could, I could be mistaken.
To circle back, though, to the Active Shooter, there are building-level safety plans.
I figured that's where it probably was. And then just out of sheer curiosity, what is an example of a time that the superintendent or her designated will contact the appropriate local government or agencies for advice or assistance during emergency situation? It was just, I just found that odd.
We had that happen this year with the water situation in Phoenisha.
Water situation? So like, public health?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Anybody else? Trustee Sherry? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Um, this is more so out of curiosity, and I'm not totally sure if it's applicable, but this safety team, is it possible to have a student on that? And like, or is that not super applicable?
I don't know what the, state ed sets the floor and the ceiling on who is on that, right?
On this team, they do.
On this team, they tell us who goes on it. Not, it's not like, at a minimum, this is who's on it. So I'm assuming there is not a student.
No, and I can't, and I don't remember since, from my time being on here, if we've ever had a student on this, so. I, so I don't think it is a student's allowed to be on it per SED.
But I'll tell you what, I will make a note because there must be a reason there isn't a student. And we will, we will ask because, yeah, I guess that is the, that is the reason is that the safety plan is for your safety predominantly. Trustee Sherry?
You know, I think that Noel's point is, is an important one. And while there probably is not an ability for a student to sit on this particular platform, I would love to see us brainstorming with students in an appropriate way about their safety and about what they think is most important in terms of the buildings and in terms of their own safety. And I think that having healthy conversations around this is really important in a really sensitive, sensible way. And I would love to have Noel and the other student government members kind of brainstorm about what that might look like. Because I think that debriefing for students is a really important part of what's been going on in our country.
Superintendent McLaren?
Well, in addition to that, this is open for comment for 30 days. So students are certainly welcome to review it and provide comments and feedback. Their voices, as you rightly pointed out, are just as important as everyone else. So that would be great.
Noel, what do you think would be the best way of getting the safety plan out to students?
We have an Association Student Government Meeting, which I was going to cover later on, on Monday after school, which I can bring this packet to and definitely bring this up and kind of talk about it. I mean, I know that, speaking from my experience, like, I didn't know that this was happening and I didn't know this was a thing. So I think definitely, also maybe bringing this up in our social studies classes and bringing that, like, up as a thing to talk about, I think would have been better, maybe, or be better.
Great. So the process from here, so I think we can encompass a couple of these suggestions. First of all, we can put out a shout point, directing people to, yeah, review. And we can sort of collect comment, however, you know, just make a clear way to collect comment. As a representative, you can represent back to the student government that this is happening and we have 30 days before the board will approve it. And so it is open for 30 days of comment. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I will close this hearing and we will see what people have to say over the next 30 days. Superintendent McLaren, District News, and welcome back to Antioa.
Thank you so much. I am thrilled to be here. I have been trying to get to each of the buildings to do a quick walkthrough just to start the week. I have been to several buildings, but I still need to get to Phoenisha and the middle school. I did have the opportunity, when I was walking through Bennett, to go through the courtyard. And it is really incredibly beautiful and peaceful and an incredible space that I think is going to continue to grow and be just a really, just a really treasured place within this building. As Mr. Bono had mentioned, there were two donations that we need to ask the board to add to the agenda tonight, both from the same family. One is in support of the courtyard and one is in support of the book boogie. So I'm hopeful that that's okay. I have also been able to set up time to meet with a number of our cabinet members and our principals this week. I have, I don't know if the trustees had a chance to get through all of their emails recently, but I did extend an invitation to meet with each trustee. And I've also set up times to meet with our newly-elected trustees. So I'm really looking forward to getting to know them. I was incredibly fortunate that, as I drove in yesterday in the morning, I realized that kindergarten screening was starting. So that's always a really exciting process that happens within our district. We currently have 65 incoming kindergartners who are either fully registered or whose registration is in process. Many of them were able to attend the screening this week. And it's just really always a wonderful way for us to get to know these young learners and prepare for them to join us in the fall. As everyone knows, the end of the year has an incredible number of events happening. I am so glad that we are going to be able to celebrate together this year. I think everybody is really, really excited to be enjoying these milestones with our students and celebrating all of their achievements. I was going to try and put together a list to read to you, but I, I can't imagine that it would be comprehensive enough. So I'm sure that people are getting communications from principals and the athletic director and their PTAs. So please come to everything you possibly can because it's really just such a wonderful time of year. And I'm very much looking forward to graduation as well. On a more solid note, COVID. You may have noticed there was no shout point today because we had no new cases. So my understanding is that the protocol this year is that if there were no new cases, the shout point is not sent out. But just so you know, the website is updated and the data did change today because we actually went from five to four active cases within the district. So that's heading in the right direction. And just lastly, everyone should look forward to attending our next board meeting because it is going to be full of joy. We will be celebrating those staff members who are being awarded tenure, along with celebrating those staff members who are leaving us to enjoy their retirement. So I always see it as kind of the two bookends of the career here in Antioa. And it's always just a really lovely evening. And that's all I have because I've only had 48 hours.
Get busy. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you very much. Board, District News. Yes, Trustee Story.
On Friday, I was able to attend the Colonial Trade Fair here. And it, it was, it was great to be back here in person and to see the kids do their thing. It was just, it was amazing. It was great to be back in person and see them all. So I want to thank everybody that put that together.
Anybody else? Trustee Bishop, try and keep your mic together this time.
I just wanted to say that I was able to attend the fourth-grade concert, which was a Bennett concert, but it was at the high school in the auditorium. It was so great. The music teachers and the orchestra and band instructors are just so amazing. And the kids did a great job. And then also. And then, uh, also trustee Salem and I attended the Ulster School Board Association, um, oh my gosh, what's it called? The Friends of Education, uh, celebration where we honored, uh, a former board member, Rob Kernit, and it was a really lovely evening.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Sherry?
I'd like us to give an update, um, to the community about where we're at with, uh, board elections. So I can start that by saying that, um, all the necessary paperwork has gone to council, um, and we are waiting for them to authorize the recount, um, which we had to approve, but it was really just a formality. So, uh, we expect to hear from them sometime in the next five to six weeks, I believe, to authorize the recount.
That is the commissioner, the commissioner of education, yeah.
Thank you. Amanda, is there anything else that you would add to that?
Not at this time. As soon as I have an update, I will inform everyone.
And then just to reiterate that process, um, we will do a recount and we will see who has formally won the election. Since Leon is, is not able to serve, if the seat belongs to him, then the Board of Education is responsible for filling that seat. And if, um, Ms. Taylor has run that seat, then the seat will go directly to her.
Great, thank you. And then with regard to trustee Osman's vacated seat, we have received three applications or letters of intent and we have begun interviews and we will, uh, after we've interviewed the candidates, we will appoint someone to fill that seat. Any other questions or comments? Great. Student Representative Noel Crandall, you have waited a long time, but you've heard some cool stuff tonight.
Yeah, thank you for both of those presentations. Um, so recently in student government, we have begun our elections for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. This process begins with collecting signatures from classmates and then our voting takes place on Infinite Campus on Friday. With our newly elected officials, we will have our last Student Government Association meeting after school on Monday of this year, in which I will bring up the safety plan. Throughout the high school, senior summit to Bel Air was a huge success. More seniors attended than ever and special thanks to Bel Air Mountain, Walt Grabowski, the Phoenisha Diner and Ulster County probation for their anti-drunk driving presentation. The National Honor Society induction ceremony is tomorrow evening. The varsity athletic award ceremony is this Thursday evening. And as finals approach us, the rise of testing anxiety is prevalent, however, many students are taking full advantage of Regent's prep classes. Yearbooks are in and they look excellent. Those should be distributed very soon. And as the year comes to a close, the Talon is expected to be releasing their last issue of the year this week, which you can find in local restaurants and local businesses, as well as I think on our website, as well as our literary magazine is producing their last mag and our Antioa newsroom is producing their last broadcast. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. You guys have been doing such an incredible job this year. We really appreciate that. I'm glad your elections are at the end of the year. That seems to make sense. Um, anybody have any other questions for Noel? Fantastic. If you need to go study for your finals, please. I do not think there was any, okay, great. All right. Um, public, uh, and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please limit comments to three minutes during public be heard. Civility is always expected. Speakers of public be heard understand that the Board of Ed cannot engage in discussion nor answer questions during public be heard. The Board of Education and superintendent especially cannot be party to discussions of individual student or personnel matters in open session. Uh, if you wish to discuss those kind of matters, you can bring them to the superintendent's, uh, attention. Rick Wolf?
Hello, my name is Rick Wolf. Uh, welcome back to Victoria and, uh, congratulations to the people that are going off the board, Kevin, and I guess a couple of people aren't here. My, um, my issue here is about the election, which Emily just spoke about. It almost looks like, why, why do I wanna come out and vote? Because Bennett's seat was left open. You were gonna look to appoint a person, you put that on hold. Then you had, um, five people running for the seat, one person backed out. Then during that process, uh, Lori Osman announced that her resignation would be effective the day after, um, the, the election. I guess I can say her name, cause it's right here in the agenda, um, to be, the day after the election. And then I hear that Leon, uh, doesn't want the seat, didn't realize what was involved in being on the board. And this was a, a former student member of the board and didn't realize what was going on. So I have people asking me, well, what's going on with the election? What's the sense of, of voting? If the board is gonna look to appoint, you know, who might be their favorites in the election? So immediately after the election, you're already putting out an ad for somebody to apply for the open seat, which Lori Osman knew well in advance that she was gonna be leaving the board and then, uh, announces that it would be the day after the election. So it just, just seemed a little funny, um, when you're trying to, to me, it looks like you're trying to manipulate the board seats, so.
Thanks, Mr. Wolf. Uh, let's see, discussion and possible action. Uh, the Board of Education approves the MOA between the Antioa Non-Teachers' Employee Association and the Antioa Central School District regarding extending the contract for a period of three years from July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and shall remain unchanged except for the accompanying changes. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop? Second trustee story, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. Uh, and, uh, now we are going to review the communication survey, which has been, um, in the making for a couple of months now. And so the idea is to sort of make us better communicators, both ends, listening and sending, sending and receiving. And really the, trustee Bishop and I worked on this and we, we sort of found some, some good surveys from other districts and we kind of tailored it to, uh, to our district. And I think the first thing, as I sort of mentioned to, to, um, to Lindsay during the hearing is that, uh, one of the things we have to do is we have to figure out how people are getting their information. So that's really one of the biggest goals of this. So may I just go through, uh, question by question and we can, if there's a discussion on any of them? And then, and then what I'd like to do is, there is one thing that I know needs to be revised because superintendent McLaren, uh, mentioned something that we, we failed to, to add to it. Um, but then what I'd like to do is I'd, I'd like to propose that if we sort of agree on this sort of broadly speaking, that we have Amanda immediately get it out to, um, our incoming board members and the, uh, the PTA, uh, uh, executives. Just because they have been sort of involved in this a little bit and not, not for them to answer the questions on the survey, but for them to, um, for them to, uh, uh, maybe give some input as to what questions might be on the survey or the quality of the survey. So first, we ask, uh, what building or buildings people have, uh, students in? The second question asks whether they have internet access at home. The third question asks whether they have internet access on their smartphone.
Now, this one, I almost wanna say maybe put sometimes because people don't always have data. You know, not everybody's on an unlimited plan, so if they go over their data, they may not have internet access on their phone.
You know what? That's fair enough. Ordinarily, I would say we don't need that, but if they, if the answer to number two is no, that they don't have internet access at home and their only internet access is on their phone, then sometimes becomes a meaningful answer. Does that seem, seem fair? Then we ask, uh, non-grading or classroom-specific information from the district. Where do you get it and, and how often? So we have, there's, this is the format of a lot of these questions. So we use email, postal mailing, you know, snail, email, snail mail, the infinite, infinite campus app, shout point, social media, district website, notes sent home, Board of Education meetings. And the omission here is that we don't have the Antioa app and that's my omission because I sort of think of the Antioa and the Infinite Campus as the same thing and they're not nearly. It's just that you can use one to access the other. Does that seem reasonable? Add the Antioa app? Superintendent McLaren?
I'm wondering if, if it's worthwhile and it may not be, but to delineate Board of Education meetings, you know, do, do people look at the agenda, read the minutes or watch the video or watch the live stream? Is it worth getting to that?
You know, I want, uh, we could do that or, but that would, that might like burden this already big question, but maybe what we can do is ask a question, yeah, a separate question with regard to information from the Board of Education. How do you, do you view the agenda? Do you look at board docs? Do you, uh, watch the meetings online or do you attend the meetings? So we'll add that question. Uh, the next question, uh, when receiving, um, why, yeah, why, this question I, I thought, this says receiving general information and this is supposed to say, uh, I don't think this question is necessary. I think this is the, this is a redundant question, right? Yeah. I thought I took it off when I redid this, but, okay. It's, it's the same.
We talked about removing it. I think we just forgot to.
That's redundant. So then we, then we come to receiving grading or classroom-specific information from a teacher or the district. Uh, and we're asking, what's the most effective way to ensure that the information reaches me? Email, snail mail, uh, infinite campus, uh, Antioa app, we'll add there, district website, notes sent home. Um, I think that's fairly straightforward.
I don't know that the Antioa app would apply to classroom-specific.
Except that you can, eh, I like.
You can get to the infinite campus app from the Antioa app, but the, the Antioa app itself doesn't contain.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how much classrooms, like i- if I wanted to see what is hap- like if you wanted to see information about the TOSA, you, you wouldn't get that. So we can take that off?
Yeah, I don't think the Antioa app would apply to that one.
Uh, okay, so no Antioa app there. Then when it comes to events, same question again, how do we, um, how do you want to be informed or how are you, how is it easiest to inform you about, you know, sporting events, um, you know, concerts, et cetera, et cetera. Same, same list. Any questions there? Then, uh, I would prefer to receive items such as monthly newsletters, lunch menus, flyers, et cetera, in the following format, electronically, paper copies or smartphone app? Yes?
Will you put, uh, check to all that apply?
Yes. Uh, would, would we want to, because we, I guess we wanna know what they prefer.
And some parents would want both.
Okay, check all. Then the next question has to do with frequency. Um, I wanna receive information from our teachers, schools and or district office. And then for teachers, weekly, monthly or quarterly. School, the building level, um, weekly, monthly or quarterly, and the district, uh, central administration. Uh, weekly, monthly or quarterly.
Um, what about adding when necessary?
Ah, okay.
You know, because from district offices, we may need something daily from them, you know, so when necess-
Great. So we'll add a fourth column. Excellent. Um, and then we wanna find out, uh, you know, we have talked, um, almost too much about sort of the need to sort of get our website, dealt with. So the next question is, I visit the Antioa website for information relating to school activities, events and academ- academic information. And then it's just daily, weekly, you know, daily, once or more a week, about once a week. It, it goes to frequency. We wanna find out if people are using the website.
Do we wanna take the occasion to ask them a general question about whether or not they find the website to be wieldy or, you know, usable?
I think we all understand that it, it's not usable and it's ineffective.
I know. I, I guess I would just like to, if there's a way to drill down on that a little bit more, because we are obviously going to need a new website, but I'd like it to be an effective one.
I think, I think there is a way to ask that. Uh, at the end of this, I was gonna maybe say, suggest adding one or two things at the end and maybe just an open-ended question.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, and I also have, um, I'd like to add something about, about access to Infinite Campus, because over the last eight years, I've had a lot of trouble personally using Infinite Campus for three children. Um, and I wanna, I, I wonder if I'm the only one. You know, I, I think that there are probably a number of other parents who are not using Infinite Campus because it's quite complicated in some ways. And I, I just would kind of like to, to measure that a little bit and see if parents understand who to reach out to if they are unable to use Infinite Campus, because I don't even know. And I, I think that's really important because it's an excellent tool for those who use it and I cannot use it.
Let's see. Go ahead.
I know when we first got Infinite Campus, what they, we, they did, the school did was have parent workshops. So to, you actually had to go to a workshop to get access to Infinite Campus. So it-
I don't love that. I mean, I, I don't like anything that-
Where you have to go, but it was, it was brand new and trying to teach the whole district parents.
But maybe there's a way that we could upload something to the unwieldy website where parents could go in and get a tutorial on their own timeframe and at their own, you know, leisure, so that, so that they can understand it. Because obviously since then, we've had many parents come through the district, um, and I have to imagine that some of them are like me and not incredibly tech savvy and not able to use it. But if we could get a tutorial maybe from the company, put it on the website in a really accessible place and let parents, especially parents who are new to the district, know how to use it. My kids have tried to teach me and I still don't get it.
Superintendent, uh, yes, trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I think, um, question number twelve addresses the website. It, and it may need some rewording, but it does address the website.
Uh, number twelve is, uh, eleven is the Infinite Campus question. And I'm wondering, because really, uh, trustee Sherry, what you just did was kind of answered the survey, right? Uh, and, and so I think that in terms of like addressing how we educate people about Infinite Campus, that'll be part of the survey result, but we still need to get to, the way we, the way we worded twelve about the website, we could almost duplicate that for Infinite Campus and the Antioa app. Sorry, go ahead.
Would you think of swapping eleven and twelve so that you're asking, um, you know, how often do you visit the website? And then what do you feel about the website? And then you could do, how often do you visit Infinite Campus and then how do you feel about it?
Great, yes. Uh, so we go ten, eleven is website and how oft, you know, or, you know, how often you use it and then information about it. And, you know, I wanna try and keep it a manageable length. Really, we should be doing the website, Infinite Campus and the app.
I was gonna suggest taking out question- I was gonna suggest taking out question 13, so maybe we could slide the app in there. Only because I, I, I'm curious what people prefer. But frankly, we need to be putting social media out onto all social media outlets. So I'm not sure if it matters, because I would, I think it's super important that there are different age demographics that use each of these profiles. And the kids use Twitter a lot, they use Instagram, they don't use Facebook, but we all use Facebook. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that it matters. I just think the information has to get out there and, on every platform in every way. And, and we should be using Twitter, because most of the kids here are using Twitter.
I, I'd like to keep this question though, because I do think we, uh, data is data. And you're, you are right, different age groups, you know, parents of elementary students tend to use, you know. It'll just give us data. Uh, you know, I think what we're trying to find out is where, not, you know, like what does, you know, the broad sweeping data of the public say, but what are, how are people currently receiving information? And is it of any use to them?
I think one thing that I personally noticed is that we, we, I think we do a, a pretty good job of Facebook. I don't think that we get a lot of, um, traffic on our Facebook in the way that we should be. Um, and I think some of that is about promotion, and I think some of that is just about learning how to use social media, which is about what time you post, where you post, where you share that information. The district should probably be posting information to community pages, et cetera. And, and I do think that that's a further discussion. But I also think that, that we're not probably using our Instagram in the way that we could be. Um, I think we're doing a much better job of getting, uh, pictures and information out there about our students and what we're doing in the building, but I'm not sure we're using it to disseminate information other than kind of promotional information, which is awesome.
Our athletic department uses Instagram pretty well historically.
Yeah, they do a great job. And, and our, and our new booster club is also doing a great job. I mean, I, I think that there's, that there's a, a real need for Instagram, but understanding your audience helps to dictate, you know, how you share information on social media. And that's something that I think that we could all use a good primer on.
Trustee Salem?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I just, I just wanted to say, you know, maybe, um, on like question five, we could add social media as an option for an answer.
Oh, it's there. Oh, wait, yeah, it's there.
It is, it is, all right. I'm sorry, I was looking at six, and I realized that was the wrong one, so yes.
Maybe it could be a two-part question, so that we're getting that information there, that we're looking for those data points. So it'll say social media, and then underneath that, perhaps it could say-
Say specify.
Yeah, specify which one click, you know, click here for Facebook, Instagram, all the above.
Move that other question to, which question is it?
The one thing I will say about that is because at the end of our discussion here, we should decide whether this is, whether we want to engage Panorama or somebody else. Because that comes, what you're, what, I want to not have, encumber this so much so that, you know, where there's like three trees on every question. I, I mean, we want people to answer it. That part I do, I do know, like, we want to keep it under, you know, under a few minutes to answer it and get all the information. And then, uh, uh, when you mentioned the website and sort of, you know, even, even deeper dive than sort of, you know, question 12, uh, I thought, we have this sort of open-ended question. Ontario schools wants to ensure that we effectively communicate with all parents. Guardians, please tell us what has worked, what has not, and share any ideas that you think could help us improve. Like, I think it is useful, and I think it is super easy, and we always hear what doesn't work. I, I'm wondering if it would be good to split that into two questions. Like, give us an example of something that has worked, give us an example of something that hasn't worked. I mean, I, I don't know, I'll, I'll let that up to you guys. But to me, it's just like, I, you know, I could, sort of to your point about social media, I could sit here and say, nothing works. You know, at, at a certain point in seven years, somebody has told me, everything doesn't work. You know, so it would be interesting to see what does work for people specifically and anecdotally.
My thought process actually, right now, is when are we going to put this out to the public to do? Because right now, parents are fried, we're, kids are fried, we're at the end of the school year. I don't think we'd get the response that we want from parents right now.
I would, I would say that this is something that the community is asking us for. You know, like, they're, they're really asking for better communication, they're really asking for us to, um, improve what they consider to be transparency, you know, and the, the only pathway there is to get the information so that we can start before September, getting this done in the way that the community wants to see it done. And I, I think it's important. I, I don't disagree with you, I'm fried with my kids, for sure, but I would definitely answer the survey. Um, and I, and I was just gonna mention to Amanda, we've done surveys before where the link is not correct when it goes out, and I think when we do that, we lose people immediately. So I really want to make sure that when this link goes out, that it's been checked and double-checked. Because if I open a survey or anything else and it doesn't work, I'm not going back to it. So let's just make sure that that is something that is triple-checked before it goes out, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Valerie, I don't disagree, but I, I, but more importantly, I think this is on people's minds, and people are talking about it right now. They will answer, there are also, you know, some events left at the end of the year here where we can actually be, where we have people congregating, uh, you know, commencement. You know, there, there are places where people are gonna be around. So I, I know it's, it's been a project to get it done amidst everything else, but I would say, let's go for it. And I think that if we can get it to people to see, you know, what their input is on it, then I think the big decision is who implements the survey.
I would also encourage my colleagues to share this kinds of information on your own social media. It's something that, that sometimes, you know, each of us does. And I think it depends on where you're at and, and how you're, how you're moving forward on that particular day. But I think that each of us has a, a social media presence that is local and would be, really, would really benefit from us sharing the information whenever we've got it. So, you know, when this comes out, I'd like to she, I'd like all of us to share it, if you're comfortable doing that. I, I will be doing that.
So, um, may I suggest that we schedule a communications committee meeting for, uh, not the 14th, um, perhaps Monday, the 13th in the evening? And people, what's that? Yeah, I, I was gonna say, it, they can be, anyone can attend them. It will be virtual, and maybe we can use the forum format. Uh, or, or we could do, I, I can't personally be there on the 14th, Tuesday, the 14th. We could do it where we normally have our COVID forum. And I'm perfectly comfortable not being there. So, should, should we do that? Should we just have it, the, our sort of communication forum? That we've, we're, hopefully, we had hoped to have it sooner, but, uh, you know, things get busy. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I, I can do that, send there, are you available as well? And the only thing I would say about that is like, let's get it out twice. If we're going to have a communication forum, we need to make sure we're communicating that to the community. So I'd want to get that shout point out, you know, soon, and then again on Tuesday, to make sure that people know that we're doing it.
So should we just commit to that Tuesday, six to seven, where we normally have our COVID forum? We will have a communications forum to gather input to the survey, not responses to the survey, but input to the survey?
Sure, sounds good.
At what point will we have, uh, a draft survey that we can share with everybody, so they can read it before that? It would be good-
Tomorrow at high noon.
Okay, it would, just it would be good if we send out the shout point, and you can say, you know, we're gonna talk about this, here it is.
Yeah, so I would like to be able to commit to revising it tonight, but I will, if you and I can work a little bit tomorrow, uh, at like 11:30 in the morning or something.
Sure, uh, on phone?
Yeah, on phone.
Okay, sure.
We'll just go through and make sure that we got everything.
Okay.
And then I'll send you the, you can, it has to be printed. I, this is, I use Survey Monkey, but we don't really have an account. I mean, it's, it's a free account, so, but you can print it and put it, you know, post it somewhere for that meeting. Uh, anything else on that? Nope, okay. The board of education hereby approves the revised corrective action plan as attached. May I have a first? Trustee Story? Second, trustee Bishop, other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. The board of education approves the following members of the district safety team. Victoria McLaren, effective six, six twenty-two. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second trustee Sherry, all those in favor? Aye. The board of education approves the intermunicipal agreement with Kingston City School District for girls' swimming and authorizes the superintendent to sign such an agreement. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop and second trustee Sherry, other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. The superintendent recommends acceptance of two donations totaling $4,000 cash from Matt and Jenny Jared, $2,000 to the, to support the creation of a positive outdoor learning space in the courtyard at the Bennett Elementary School, $2,000 to support the book boogie at the Bennett Elementary School, and recommends increasing the budget line. A 2110.431-03 supplemental by $4,000. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Sherry. Our gratitude for these generous donations. All those in favor? That's unanimous. The superintendent recommends acceptance of donations totaling $2,793.75 cash from various donors as scholarship awards for the graduating class. Uh, $150 from Jean Douglas, $1,000 from Kathleen and Joshua Morton Strauss, $500 Bonnie Simon, $100 from Justin Dernison, $150 from Phyllis and Thomas Rosato, $31.25 from Scott Richards, $31.25 from Don Gottlieb, $500 from the Boysville Market, $300 from Martin Krakauer M.D., $31.25 from Nicole Summer. May I have a first? Trustee Story and second trustee Sherry. Again, our gratitude, um, all those in favor? That's unanimous. The board of education hereby approves the overnight trip for Jasmine Ryder to attend the NISFA track and field championships in Syracuse, New York on June 10th and 11th, and pay all necessary fees. May I have a first? Trustee Sherry, uh, second trustee Bishop, um, good luck Jasmine. Um, all those in favor? That's unanimous. The board of education hereby abolishes, uh, one full-time high school mathematics teacher and creates a .6 high school mathematics teacher. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Story. Are there any questions or comments here? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, the board of education hereby creates, uh, hereby create the following positions. One full-time special education teacher K6, and one full-time temporary middle school principal until, uh, the current middle school principal retires. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Story. Questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. ICR is the board of education hereby approves, uh, item 12.02. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Sherry. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, the board of education hereby approves consent agenda items 1302 to 1306. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Story, questions or comments?
I've reviewed the Schedule U, and it appears to be in order.
It's the long one. All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. Old business. I, I do want to make it very clear, and I'm not responding, uh, I, I spoke to trustee Sherry about this, and we said we would review in old business. We must follow the law with regard to our election. This has taken a lot of consultation with our lawyers, and, uh, and we are doing what we are absolutely required to do. There is no sort of, uh, yes, we, we, when a, when a, when a board seat is vacated, there are three ways the board can fill a vacant seat. We can, uh, appoint, we can hold a special election, which we generally choose not to do because of the expense, or we can leave it vacant. Unfortunately, all, uh, two of those have come up, and, and the situation with our current election has been extremely complicated. And that is that. I don't, I don't know what else to say about the election. And we've, I've heard a lot of stuff personally about it, and, and, and there, it is the same narrative, and I have the same answer. There is really only one very specific path that we are allowed to take with regard to this very unusual election. And there are no, there is, there is no, um, discretion involved in it whatsoever. Trustee Sherry?
This feels a, a little bit uncomfortable for me, but I'm, I'm going to, to do it. I, I have known Leon Savage since he was, uh, a fairly young man attending school here, and I just, uh, Leon did explain to the board and to the district clerk why he was not accepting the position if he won it. Um, and it had nothing to do with his misunderstanding of, of what it meant to be on the board. It had everything to do with, um, the college that he's attending. And he was very clear about it, and I, I don't, I think he would be perfectly fine with the board sharing that information, but without his permission, I'm not going to do that. But I do, I really want to clear up that there was any mal-intent on his part, because I think that's unfair. He was surprised by what he learned from his school. Um, he thought he had permission to go ahead and do this, and he did not, uh, in the way that he understood it. So he had every intention, from everything that he expressed to the board, of taking that seat if he won it. And he is a young man, um, his family's been in this area for a really long time, and he was an outstanding member of our school community. So I just, I just want to make it clear that, you know, everything that Leon expressed to us was that he was planning to take the seat absolutely, and had something change in his life circumstances.
And again, with regard to legalities, there was some question, uh, anyone can run for a seat? And you do not, one of the requirements, there are certain requirements. You are not required to be able to, you know, fulfill a six-year term if you're running for a six-year seat in New York State. And without any specific thing about, uh, Leon, again, it is unfortunate and, and complicated. I would just say, I would encourage everyone to look at it this way. Someday, we are going to have a young person sitting up here on this board. And I'd say, that day will be a great day. It didn't happen this time. I say that, uh, if, if there is anything that makes it worth the complications, at least we had a young person step up as we sort of sit up here and put our fists in there about civics and civic engagement. At least we had one step up, and I hope that happens again. Is there anything else, any other old business? Is there any new business? Yes, trustee Story?
Um, I've been thinking about this, seeing that we're going to have four brand-new board members starting next year, starting in June, July. What we do in, uh, we do like our training, our board training, we start our public meetings, say, half hour, hour later. But we go into a retreat session for all of the board members, and we do this type of education of the board 101, and team building, and things like that. I think it's something, I've been thinking about this for a while to see, because this is something that we all need some guidance and some training, especially we were having four brand-new people, not know what it is, so it doesn't, so everybody knows the same information. And whether we do it at every single meeting, or we do it at every other meeting, but something that we do at, at meetings, so we know that this information will be able and available. but something that we do at, at meetings so we know that this information will be able and available to everybody.
We do also have Dr. Bill Christensen coming in to do retreats with us. So those will be regularly scheduled and, and he will cover a lot of information about board duty and how, you know, kind of interpersonal relationships and community building in those. So don't, just don't forget.
No, I, I understand fully, but he's not gonna be there a lot of the times. It's for this and this is more for us and it would have to be, in order for all of us to do it, we'd have to do it in a retreat setting because this isn't an exact session information. But there is stuff that we have, would be discussing. You know, it's like how to read a Schedule U. You know, that is something that's very technical and something that every, all board members need to know. So.
I was gonna ask Cindy if she could do a, a training for the new board members on that.
See, this is, but this is something, like, that's just an example of something that we need to do for everybody to understand what a board, what the board can and can't do and all that stuff.
I, I like the idea, Val. I really like that idea. I think we'd have to look at our schedule and, you know, figure out how we can do it in terms of time and not make it complicated for the community to remember if we're doing it every other board meeting, you know? Does that mean the board meeting time is gonna change? Because I don't think that's a good idea. But I do think it, it's, it would be a good opportunity to cover important information that new members need to know and also an opportunity for us to, you know, build our own community.
I think it's a great idea. I also, I, I, you know, you all can, once Dr. Bill's, don't look at me like that. Once Dr. Bill's, once Dr. Bill's schedule is, is sort of situated, you know, with the, the frequency of the coaching, perhaps there can be regular sort of retreat, you know, selected topics, retreats, Schedule U. Also, just so you know, I, we, we're trying to, because part of Dr. Bill's consultancy is building projects. And so he is, as summer heats up, he's been a little bit busier than he was before. But we are, I, I, I did reach out to him to ask if he could just meet with us and the sort of incumbent trustees to give us a little board do's and don'ts in, in a retreat. Or not incumbent, I'm, I'm sorry, incoming. Yeah, the incoming trustees to sort of like go over some, you know? He said he has this, like a, a rap that he has, like board do's and don'ts. And I, I think, I think a well-trained board is going to be an excellent thing. And, yeah, we will have four new members and one mentor.
Two points of new business. One, wondering Superintendent McLaren or Superintendent Laffin if we could get an update on the anonymous reporting app. So kind of like an official update where I, I'd like to understand how many people have used it, how it's been disseminated to the students and what the plan is for September for dissemination as well. And, you know, a feeling for whether or not we think it's an effective tool and if the students think it's an effective tool, which is probably more important than what we think. And then my next question was about summer lunch programming and wondering what we have in place. I know the last couple of summers, we've had, you know, specific funding that helped provide food for students. I'm particularly concerned because the libraries, which in our community have provided summer lunch or summer food programming in all of our towns, are not doing that this summer. And I am concerned about it. You know, I, I have some ability to pick up some new families, but, but not a lot. So if the school has some ability in there, I'd like to talk about it.
Do you know why they're not doing it? Is it because federal funding is being cut?
Well, I will say that Woodstock did not have a lot of success in, in program usage. There just weren't people who were accessing it in the way that it needed to. So they had some problems with food storage, et cetera. They have a new library director, so I'm hoping that she's gonna take another look at it and see if there's a way that we can partner our two kind of agencies together to see if we can help with that. And Shandaken, I think, is just feeling as if, you know, they've done as much as they can. I, I don't want to speak for the librarian there, but, but that's kind of the impression that I've gotten. They have a huge territory to cover and they were delivering their food because many of their residents don't have walking access to the library. So they actually had volunteers delivering all of their meals. And I think it was really complicated for them last summer and their main volunteer who did that is, is no longer with them. So I, I, I think it's compli, it's a complicated thing to take on and the district did it really well. And I don't imagine that we can do it anywhere close to what we did during COVID. But if there's a way for, you know, us to kind of work together on that, I, I would love to, to be involved in any way I can.
Any other requests for information or new business?
No, but I, I'm going to motion that we enter to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular employee.
Great. Second, Trustee Bishop, all those in favor? It's unanimous.